Good evening, everyone. The May 2023 Brookhaven Borough Council meeting will now be called to order. Please join us in rising for the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Please remain standing. The mayor is absent, so I will read the deceased residents for the month of April 2023. Sharon Craven, Patricia Walton, Dorothy McEnfelder, Carol Pugh, wife of retired Brookhaven Police Officer David Pugh, Anthony Cordetti, Ralph Costiola, and Gladys D. Carlin Toño. Thank you, everyone. Mr. Wilwood, would you give us the roll call?
Yes, sir.
Mr. Heller.
President.
Mrs. Fuchs.
Here.
Mrs. Heller.
Present.
Mayor Leslie is absent. Mr. Vasquez.
Here.
Ms. Swicki.
Here.
Mr. Pappas.
Here.
Mr. Gilroy.
Here.
Mr. Wills.
Here.
Mr. Catania.
Here.
Mr. Wilwood's here. Mrs. Boyle.
Present.
Chief Montella.
Here.
Chief Vice.
Here.
Thank you, Mr. Wilwood. Ms. Ford.
Oh.
Yeah. Uh, I do. You should be grateful. Good evening.
My goodness, wow. All right. Good evening, everyone. All right, Coburn Elementary School, it's a little bit long, but I'll try to quick. We kicked off Autism Awareness Month last month. In April, Coburn Elementary students and staff participated in learning opportunities and fundraisers to raise autism awareness. Students and staff participated in Light It Up Blue each Friday throughout the month, wearing blue, and student council sold autism awareness bracelets to benefit the Eagles Autism Foundation. We kicked off the month with a fantastic Flyers Assembly hosted by the Philadelphia Flyers Organization. It was a lot of fun. Students were engaged in spirited games and dance with Flyers mascot Gritty. And, you know, we saw the Gritty dance again, so it was awesome. We had a great financial literacy lesson. Coburn first grade students participated in a terrific assembly hosted by the Franklin Mint Federal Credit Union. Students had an opportunity to learn about saving, spending, sharing, and earning money. It was a fun, engaging lesson on financial literacy for our youngest learners. Right now, we are doing, of course, Pennsylvania System of School Assessment, PSSA exams. Per Pennsylvania Department of Ed, students in grades three to five are required to complete state testing in ELA, math, and science. Students, of course, are giving their best effort, which is all we can ask of them. Recent achievements at Coburn Elementary. Coburn Elementary students and staff joined students across the county for an incredible course in band performance. Select students were chosen to represent Coburn Elementary at the Pennsylvania Music Education Association Band and Chorus Fest. The Coburn Elementary STEM team did it again this year, taking one of the coveted top honors at Delaware County STEM competition, where they competed against 60 teams, earning the top honor for the best STEM presentation category. Coburn also had three student winners who won Delaware County Young Authors Contest. The student writing is selected from hundreds of stories submitted from around the county. Students will be celebrated in May at the Delaware County Young Author Ceremony. Actually, there were 600 entries this year. Coburn Elementary also had four winning writers in the American Legion Essay Contest, which is hosted by Green Ridge Memorial Unit 926. Again, the winners were selected from over 100 entries. Looking ahead, we will celebrate Teacher Appreciation Week next week. The Coburn Chorus and Art Festival, followed by the band concert, will also happen early in May. And then also this month is action-packed with engaging and fun in-school activities, such as our Garden Fest Field Day, reading celebration, and we're going to wrap it up with a Phillies Assembly. And finally, we'll finish the month with Memorial Day Weekend, which is a time to remember and honor those who have served our country. In June, we're looking forward to inviting our million-word readers to be recognized by council, which is going to be awesome. Thank you again for always doing that. The families and the students look forward to it for sure, and so do I. And then, of course, if you want to see what's happening daily at Coburn Elementary, follow us on Twitter.
Thank you, Ms. Ford.
You're welcome. Thank you. Have a great night.
You, too.
Thanks.
Mr. McManus, step on up. Andrew McManus is here on behalf of the Boy Scout Troop Number 272 in Rose Valley to present to council a project completed at the Haley-Christine Jackson Butterfly Sanctuary.
Yeah, so before he gets involved with his proposal, Andrew did meet with the committee back on April 2nd and presented his ideas. So this is his final proposal for council approval. Andrew.
Hello.
You can raise it up.
Hold the mic up a little bit.
There you go.
Hello, my name is Andrew McManus. I come here from Boy Scout Troop 272, sent my Eagle Scout project at Haley-Christine Jackson Butterfly Sanctuary. I plan to build 24 butterfly houses, 12 tall butterfly houses and 12 short. The butterfly houses will be painted like bright colorful colors to like help like bleh.
Don't be nervous.
Yeah, no, you're fine.
Like mental health awareness, like to help it, and bringing back of the monarch butterflies to Delaware County. The project will also consist of light maintenance to the park.
Great.
It's great.
Awesome.
Thank you.
It does require a motion to accept, does it not?
Yes.
With that, I'll entertain a motion to accept Mr. McManus's proposal to complete the work at the Haley-Christine Jackson Butterfly Sanctuary.
I'll make the motion.
I'll second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
None opposed, I would imagine. Motion carries unanimously. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
See you down. Good job.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good luck with the project, Andrew.
Open the first public discussion session. If there's anyone that would like to speak for public discussion, please approach the podium, state your name and street for the record. Public discussion going once, twice. The first public discussion session is closed. Chief Vice. Good evening, chief.
Good evening, chief. So we had a very busy month. I'll go through this as quick as I can here. For the month of April 2023, Brookhaven Police initiated or were assigned a total of 882 CAT assignments through DelCom. So we were very busy this month, as it seems we've been for the past few. Going through our incidents, we had two aggravated assaults, we had two burglaries, and I would just note that both of those burglaries were resolved. There have been two arrests for both of them. We had 12 thefts, two simple assaults, one forgery, three vandalism or criminal mischief, 11 fraud, two public drunkenness, seven DUI arrests, two disorderly conducts, seven narcotics investigations, 16 animal complaints, one solicitor complaint, three curfew violations, one noise violation, 35 suspicious conditions, one harassment complaint, 23 disturbances or domestic disputes, three juvenile complaints, five civil complaints, 60 medical assists, two mental health responses, 16 assist other departments, 15 alarms, 19 vehicle crashes, and 29 hazardous condition or assist motorist calls. For the month, we had 56 adult arrests. That is up significantly. We also had 17 juvenile arrests for the month. Our traffic citations issued, there were 153. We issued 13 parking violations, and there were 321 warnings issued. On January 24th, 2023, we had an armed carjacking at Arwala, as many are aware. On that same date, in that evening, we took one of the males in custody for that robbery. Since that time, Detective Wetton has been working with the FBI to continue this investigation. And on April 28th, Detective Wetton assisted the FBI as they arrested two subjects and charged them federally with the carjacking. In addition to our carjacking, they were also charged with a carjacking in a neighboring jurisdiction. This was as a direct result of the initial investigation and then thereafter that our officers conducted, as well as Detective Wetton. So I appreciate all their hard work that went into this investigation, and it's still going to continue. I anticipate that there'll probably be more arrests. On Thursday, April 27th, myself, President Heller, councilwoman, and police committee chair, Mrs. Heller, Sergeant Habik, Sergeant Eastman, were in Harrisburg to attend the Pennsylvania Chiefs of Police Association Accreditation Commission meeting. Our department's assessment report was presented to the commission, and the commission voted unanimously to approve our police department to receive full accreditation status. Many of you heard me speak about accreditation before and the importance on meeting these strict standards. This accomplishment confirms that we meet the state-recognized standards. To put this in perspective, there are approximately 18,000 police departments in the United States. Out of these departments, there are only 808 accredited police departments, of which we are now one. In Pennsylvania, there are roughly 1,207 police departments, and approximately 150 have achieved accreditation. We now join those ranks. This has been around a year and a half project, and I am honored and proud of our accomplishment. I want to thank our sergeants and all of our officers for all they have done to help us achieve this goal. I also want to thank Mayor Leslie and council for your support. Without your support, none of this would have been possible. We are proud to display our accreditation certificate tonight for everyone to see. This month, we are recognizing one of our brand-new officers, Officer Arabi Yusef, as our Officer of the Month. Officer Yusef completed his field training and began his solo patrol. Immediately, he hit the ground running and has proven to be a hard worker. One of his first investigations when he went on solo patrol was a fraud case. He actually had the case solved before the end of his 12-hour shift. He has a keen eye for traffic and vehicle violations and aggressively enforces these violations while he's working. He positively interacts with our residents and business owners and enjoys getting out and engaging with our community. We are proud to have him on our team, and we thank him for working hard every day. So I am proud to announce that Officer Yusef has been selected as Officer of the Month for April 2023. I would also like to thank our Public Works Department for their assistance this month. It may sound kind of minor, but we had the storage room that had been filled with very old files that dated back decades. There's a designated process, and it's very tedious. It's extremely labor-intensive to properly dispose of all these files. With the assistance of our Public Works Department, we were able to take care of all these files and dispose of them properly. I also extend a huge thank you for their help, as well as Harry, in helping us make all that possible. The room is much more presentable at this point. As far as our community engagement, I want to thank Coco's Pizza, Aston for their donation to our police department. We had a fun night with our families at their restaurant recently, and they made a donation to our police department. We also attended the Borough Easter Egg Hunt. We enjoyed spending time and watching the children of all ages as they raced for about 6 million eggs everywhere. We also assisted the Little League and softball parade to kick off their seasons, and we're proud to have sponsored a team this year, and we wish everyone good luck with their season. We were also invited and happy to participate in a demonstration at Sun Valley High School for distracted and impaired driving. We thank school resource officer Shane Coyle from Aston Township Police Department for the invitation. This was a realistic and multifaceted response to show students the impact impaired driving has on so many. Just lastly, as far as training, Detective Wetton attended his monthly SWAT training. Officers Connor and Yusef, as I had stated, completed their field training, and they're on regular patrol assignments at this point. And Sergeant Habik attended, it's called JTAC training, that is required training for our Justice Network information ship. Let's move to my report.
Thank you, chief. Thank you again for your hard work in the accreditation process, and congratulations again.
Chief, I wanted to thank you real quickly for having your guys out on my street. I heard that you had quite a few pulled over in a short amount of time for speeding, so thank you. Just please keep doing that.
You will.
Eventually, the problem will go away. Thank you.
Chief Montella.
Evening, chief.
Council and presidents. Brookhaven Fire Company's April 2023 fire report. We had four fire incidents in the borough, 12 non-fire, 29 calls for mutual aid, five training sessions, a total of 55 calls for the month, answered 233 fire calls so far this year. We had $1,000 loss on contents, $200,000 of property endangered for the month, no firefighter injuries, no civilian injuries. Our manpower was 55 calls, averaged 13 firefighters per call. We were in service for 418 hours for the month. We were in service 2,567 hours for the year. We had five training sessions, 26 average firefighters, 267 hours of training log for the month, 1,463 for the year. We had the following incidents in Brookhaven Borough. We had two building fires, one at 3427 Mount Vernon Avenue contained to a dryer fire, and 4703 Edgemont Avenue, which ended up being a CO2 leak. It was not a fire, an actual building fire. One motor vehicle accident, 352 and Whitley Road. We had two, we responded to two calls with the ambulances for two pedestrians struck, one at 4919 Camelot Drive, the other one at 4580 Edgemont Avenue. We had one gas leak at Traditions at Ridley Creek, Unit 221, and one CO leak at 158 Bradbury Road. We assisted Aston Township on a motor vehicle accident with entrapment at Bridgewater Road and Judy Way. We assisted Upland Fire Company on a vehicle fire in the Crozier parking garage, and we assisted Middletown Fire Company on a building fire on Spring Valley Way. We assisted Chester Township Fire Department on a building fire at 5 and with Commerce Drive. Our monthly training was truck company and SAW operations. We had a deputy chief from Philadelphia Fire Department come to the station, give us a class on cancer prevention and after-call cleanup for our firefighting gear, as well as our personnel and their body cleanup after responding to building fires. He gave a little class on officer duties. We did some May Day lessons learned from accidents involving Philadelphia firemen. And we also had our second ALS Assist class with the Crozier paramedics. We finished that up, and we did some truck company, finished up truck company operations training at the old CNN Skate Palace before they tore that down. We're also, ask anybody that wants to attend to hit our website up for our Coach Bag Bingo on Friday, May 19th. And we also went to Sun Valley along with the police department and neighboring companies for the mock crash for the kids attending the Sun Valley proms. Our ambulance report for April 2023, 209 ambulance calls for the month, 125 patients transported to the hospital, 81 local alarms. Of those calls, 103 of them were dispatches ALS calls, 106 were dispatches BLS calls, and the ambulances responded to 845 ambulance calls so far this year. Let's see. Thank you, chief.
Thank you, chief.
Thank you, chief. Mayor is absent. Mr. Wills.
Yes, thank you, Mr. President, and good evening, ladies and gentlemen. Copy of the solicitor's report is on file with the Borough Secretary's Office in the event any members of the public would like to review it. I have one action item for Borough Council's consideration this evening. That concerns the land development project at 4236 Edgemont Avenue. If council shall recall, back in September of 2021, it granted conditional land development approval to Brookhaven Chicken LLC to conduct a Popeyes, or strike that, to develop and construct a Popeyes restaurant at that particular site. Subsequent thereto, the developer and the borough entered into a land development agreement with the borough, which required the developer to complete the public improvements to said development within 52 weeks. Obviously, that development has not yet been constructed. According to the developer's attorney, as a result of economic and supply factors, that development has been delayed. It is now ready to proceed. Therefore, the developer is requesting a one-year extension to allow it to complete those public improvements by October of 2023. The land development agreement that the borough and the developer did sign allowed the developer one additional year to complete those developments. And so therefore, if it is the pleasure of Borough Council, a motion would be in order to grant the extension of Brookhaven Chicken LLC to complete those public improvements on or about October of 2023.
Who wants the motion?
I'll take it.
I'll second it.
Roll call, Mr. Wilwood.
Mrs. Fuchs.
Yes.
Mr. Heller.
No.
Mrs. Heller.
Yes.
Mr. Gilroy.
Yes.
Mr. Pappas.
Yes.
Ms. Swicki.
Yes.
Mr. Vasquez.
Yes, it hopes they actually communicate until...
Yes, as habit.
Motion carries. It should be noted that should the motion have failed, that we would have lost that battle in court anyway, so. The council wasn't well aware of that in making their decision, but I will not put my name on that, that's for sure. Any Ms. Wills?
With that, Mr. President, I will so advise the developers' authority that the borough has reluctantly so agreed to extend that developers' agreement.
Mr. Wills, what happened? If they pull that deadline? I was just going to ask this.
A certain amount must be completed by then, and there is, it's a very loose definition. Go ahead, sir.
All the improvements must be substantially completed on or about the end of October of 2023.
And if that does not happen?
Then bad things can happen.
Thank you for the legal term there.
Yes.
Yep.
The second item on my agenda concerns the loan application that the borough has filed with the Delaware Valley Regional Finance Authority. As council is aware, last month, it authorized my office to file an application for a loan in the amount of $250,000 to assist the borough in the lighting project for the baseball and softball fields. I am pleased to advise council that that application has been preliminarily approved. We have received a very competitive interest rate of 3.367%. I expect that we will be passing an ordinance authorizing the issuance of a general obligation note to the Delaware Valley Regional Finance Authority at Borough Council's monthly meeting to occur on June 5th of 2023. Third item on my agenda concerns a subpoena that had been issued to our police department. A defense attorney had requested the entire personnel file of a former part-time police officer. In response to that subpoena, I had filed a motion to quash that subpoena in the Delaware County Court of Common Pleas. The argument was made to the court on April 17th of 2023. As a result of that motion, as a result of that oral argument, I am pleased to advise that Defense Council has agreed to withdraw that particular subpoena, and therefore, our motion is now moot. Fourth item on my agenda concerns the recent class action settlement that had occurred with the Monsanto company. As a result of that class action settlement, the borough was awarded a settlement fund in the sum of $17,414. As council shall recall, this settlement was as a result of a lawsuit that had been filed by thousands of municipalities alleging Monsanto had defectively designed PCB containing products that caused environmental harm to municipal stormwater and wastewater systems throughout the United States, including here in Brookhaven Borough. Again, that check has been deposited in the borough's general fund, and now council has vast discretion on how it wishes to utilize those settlement funds.
We've decided to earmark it for the shortfall for the light project, I believe. I don't think you need the motion to do such, do you?
No.
Okay.
And finally, I do wish to extend my congratulations to the police department. That accreditation places the Brookhaven Borough Police Department in elite status throughout the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania. Make no mistake about that, and that is unparalleled in the great history of the Brookhaven Police Department. So to the chief, the mayor, council, and of course, everybody who was involved in that accreditation process, and I know how extensive that was, again, my heartiest congratulations. And with that, Mr. President, I can report general progress.
Thank you, Mr. Wills. Mr. Catania.
Thank you, Mr. President. First up, I have a motion to approve the updated escrow stipulation for the Popeyes. This was originally three separate escrow agreements. They allow us to adjust those on an annual basis. My recommendation is to set the site improvements at $305,542 with an inspection fee of $15,250. For the Edgemont Avenue site improvements, $40,201.65 with an inspection fee of $2,000. And the Edgemont Avenue, all site improvements, $9,578.2 with an inspection fee of $480.
It's your pleasure. So moved.
I'll second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed or questions on the motion?
And just for council's edification, again, what the engineer is doing is basically increasing the amount of public improvement escrow monies that must be deposited with the borough. The engineer estimated those public improvement amounts 18 months ago. Obviously, the cost of labor, the cost of products and materials have increased incrementally, and therefore, the engineer is increasing the amount of public improvement money that that developer must deposit with the borough. And I will so advise the attorney for the developer of those new amounts.
Thank you for that interjection. Mr. Catania.
And that is one way, if the October date comes and they don't finish, that escrow money is there to finish anything that they haven't completed.
We'll see.
Purpose of that. Next up, the motion to approve the resolution for the application for the DCED Greenways, Trails, and Recreation Grant. This would be improvements to Garcia Park, and I would say we do it up to $250,000, which is the grant maximum.
It's your pleasure.
Before...
Question first?
Yes, there is a question. So this is in reference to the meeting that Tom and I attended on Monday. Oh, and Friday, correct? Okay. So it is to improve Garcia Park with adding equipment for sensory STEM and for handicapped accessibility for that park. I mean, it's one of the, I guess, the longest one that hasn't been, I guess, had any improvements.
And removing brush in the back of the park, but not trees, correct?
Correct.
Okay.
Yep. I just wanted to do that.
Can you remove that spotlight while you're at it?
Would be nice to have that handicap accessible.
What's your pleasure, counsel?
I made the motion.
Oh, you did?
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed or questions on the motion? Motion carries.
Next, I have a motion to adjust the sewer unit allocation for the former Shell Car Wash property located at 3919 Edgemont Avenue to one unit for billing purposes.
So moved.
I'll second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any questions or oppose? Motion carries.
And again, with this particular item, if in fact the Car Wash was ever rectified and began operations, once again, we can adjust those upward, the EDUs if necessary. So I assume the borough officials will keep an eye as to whether that Car Wash should ever again go back into service and operation.
Thank you, sir.
The final action item is the Public Works has reported a sinkhole at 3407 Commerce Avenue. They conducted some testing to determine that was a street lateral. Also need authorization to repair the street lateral at 3407 Commerce Avenue.
Commerce is a mess lately, but we're fixing it.
Is it 3407 or 3704?
It's the only sinkhole there. I have 3704.
It's the only sinkhole there.
It's the only one there, and it points out, yeah.
Should there be a question, we can amend the motion next month.
I have 3704 on my report. The agenda says 3407.
Not a problem. Correction may be made at a future date. What is the pleasure?
So moved.
I'll second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed or questions? Motion carries.
And just updates and reports, the 2023 street resurfacing program has started. If you haven't noticed, the street's being torn up. AFDAM anticipates being completed by the end of this week. And the PICO Gas Main Project on Grant Drive and Jackson Drive, we received notice from PICO's contractor that the service relocation should be done by mid-May, plan to retire the old main by the end of May, and final restoration to be completed by July. That's all I have. Thank you.
Mr. Catania, did you hear of anybody from your firm walk the street you were sent to or going to?
Today, he was out there, I believe. I have not seen a report yet. They were out there today.
Thank you, Mr. Catania. Note that... Note that the, we do not have the Council meeting minutes to approve. I was asked to push that to next month. That is not an issue. That is not on the agenda. I have a motion to cancel the Borough Council meeting originally scheduled for Monday, July 3rd, 2023, and to reschedule that meeting for Monday, July 10th, 2023, at 7:00 PM to accommodate the holiday weekend, July 4th holiday weekend.
Make the motion?
Mm-hmm.
I'll make the motion.
I'll second.
All in favor? None opposed? Motion?
Change the website, too, for those dates.
Thank you.
And that has to be advertised, so I'm assuming our Borough Secretary will place an ad in the Delaware County Daily Times.
Do you have that, Mr. Hammer? Thank you, sir. I have a motion to name the walking trail behind Brookhaven Borough Hall after the late, great Betty Kelly. The name shall be the Betty Kelly Memorial Walking Trail.
Do you need a motion? Make the motion.
Second.
All in favor? None opposed, I would imagine. Motion carries, so Mr. Willard can get on that with the plaques and anything else to honor the late, great Betty Kelly.
Are you gonna put a plaque or something?
Yeah, John's.
Yeah, we're working on it.
Something for Council is...
Okay, thank you.
Counsel will meet an executive session immediately following tonight's meeting to discuss multiple personnel matters. Also, the Budget Committee will meet Wednesday, 5:30 this Wednesday at 7 o'clock PM in the Council Chamber. Those are first of our monthly meetings for 2023. Other than that, I report general progress. Ms. Sawicki.
Yes, I do have bills to be paid for the month of May. General fund, $52,860.37. Sewer fund, $15,918.28.
Yes, 7:00.
For a total for May, $68,778.65. So, I'm gonna make a motion so we could pay them this month.
I'll second.
All in favor? Any questions? Any opposed? Motion carries.
That's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Sawicki. Mrs. Fuchs.
Thank you. The ordinance committee met on April 20th, making additional modifications to the Chapter 1062 Parks and Recreation ordinance. Our next meeting is scheduled for Thursday, May 18th. Rec Board and Community News. The Rec Board met last Thursday to discuss upcoming events, and I'm sure Mr. Dykes will keep us updated at the next public discussion. We had a flower arranging for beginners class yesterday, the 30th, in the community room. Nine people attended, so everyone that signed up attended. I'd like to thank Pat for arranging something new for our residents, and it was a big hit. So, we're trying to have new things come to the Borough, and we could always use help and assistance with that. Our Shredna Electronics Recycling Event was held on Saturday, the 29th. Luckily, the rain held off for the most part. We had many residents swing by and drop off their paper and their electronics. Actually, a lot of people dropped off paper. I was a bit surprised. We will have a report from Wiggins and from VNL within the next month or so. Our Flea Market will be on Sunday, June 4th, from 9:00 AM until 3:00 PM. Please call the office, register during normal business hours. In-person evening signups will be, they were held tonight, May 8th, 15th, 22nd, from 6:00 to 7:30 PM, and the cost to rent a table is $20. Books on Blankets is coming back to Eaton Park, hosted by Middletown Library on May 18th and the 25th, beginning at 10:30 AM. Registration with the library is requested, and don't worry, the bathrooms and the playground will be open. Volleyball's new session will begin on May 23rd through July 27th. That's Tuesdays and Thursdays. The cost is $50 for the 10 weeks. If interested, please call the office or let me know. And lastly, Burkeaven Farmers and Makers Market, hosted at Real Church, June 3rd through September 16th, on Saturdays from 8:00 AM until 1:00 PM. The address is 301 Edward Drive in Burkeaven. For more information, to be a vendor for the season or for a week by week basis, please contact BurkeavenFMmarket@gmail.com or visit realchurch@burkeaven.org, Farmers and Makers Market. All proceeds from lot use will be donated to various nonprofit organizations globally and locally. It's on my report. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Fuchs. Mr. Pappas.
I attended the Historical Committee last month in reference to various products or projects. I also attended the 911 Center along with Councilperson Heller, Mrs. Heller, in reference to some critical awareness on critical incidents that Council members should be aware of. I also attended a EMS forum that Mrs. Heller sponsored regarding the ambulance services here in our town as well as throughout Delaware County.
EMS on life support.
Yeah. Also, I attended the Public Works Committee. Always proud to announce that no Borough vehicles were damaged and there was no Borough employees that were injured. And finally, I want to personally thank Chief Weiss. In the years that I was with the department and the last tenure of my years that were there, we always talked about it, but it never gained any traction because of the difficulties that it took to even take on the accomplishment. Well done. Thank you.
Again, one more time. Ten to twelve. That's in my report. And you promised it during your interview.
I know, you did. You did.
And came through. Mr. Vasquez.
Thank you, Mr. Heller. President. Keep this brief for you. Turn on my mic, that might help. The April monthly Public Works Report, real brief, three sewer calls. First one was at 3515 Edgemont. The second was at 4924 Greenwood. And the third one was at 200 Mars. All three calls, all three calls were only homeowner. Our Borough lines were clear. Thankfully, that sewer machine has been doing great work for us, and we'd like to keep those lines clear. As Mr. Catania said, the sinkhole was reported at 37, is it 3704 Commerce?
It is 3704. I found the...
Okay. And as Mr. Catania already stated, we are on top of that. Public Works team assisted with the, with Catania engineering, opening up manhole covers on Upland Road, and we are clearing the land for the DEP at the sewer treatment plant. Onto the sewer cleaning televising, a thousand feet of sanitary sewer mains were cleaned during this month. The sanitary sewer main that leaves the treatment plant was televised for Mr. Catania's office. As Chief Weiss said earlier, the Public Works Department helped the Police Department with cleaning out the files to make things nice and tidy, just like the way I like it. We assisted CWA with locating the water leak on Grant. Pico had given us some advisement on the island restoration, that it is complete on, by Mount Vernon, and we're just looking over everything that they're doing, make sure there's no issues there. Three labels were placed on the flags on Cambridge Island. There are 49 PA one-call tickets. Our year-to-date total is 183. Six hero banners that were damaged, there were six hero banners that were damaged and were repaired. Four concrete pads were installed along the walking trail on Eaton Park for the park benches. There was a water leak that was found and repaired at Memorial and Sampson Park Buildings. The waters turned on, as Mrs. Heller had told us previous to this meeting, and the traffic cans were placed out for the shred event at Coburn. The second quarter chipping will start May 8th, the week of May 8th. And lastly, for the Public Works Report, we're gonna allow AF Damon to short dump a couple of the millings so we can level out the parking lot at Memorial, so it's not all bumpy there anymore. So, we are working on that. And that is all I have right now. I'll leave the zoning part to Mr. Gavin.
Thank you, sir. I should add that the latest Hometown Hero Banner application period is open until June 1st, and another reminder that any time a banner's damaged, they cannot be replaced individually now. The printer now requires orders up 10, so if banners get damaged, we have to wait until there are 10 that are damaged beyond repair to place the orders. I don't make the rules, the printer does, so it'll just be a delay in replacing any damaged banners going forward. So, what we'll do is we'll add any current damaged banners to the latest rounds of orders, but after that, it will be, there will be a delay. Mr. Guro.
Thank you, Mr. President. I do have anything to follow up with that, but I do have to echo what everyone in the chambers have said about Chief Weiss. I cannot commend you enough. In my opinion, that was one of the last goals we had in your interview, so I'm really not sure what else you gotta do, but I, I'm sure you...
Take a vacation.
You don't sit still too much, though. I assume you'll figure it out, but it's been quite commendable in the short time that you've been able to achieve, and not just you as a leader in your department, getting everyone to work as a team. It's been night and day, and it's been phenomenal, and it's been one of the shining parts of our town, along with the Fire Department. I mean, it's just, it's impressive what we do with our, our emergency services here, and it's commendable to everyone else here. Thank you very much, Chief.
We will delete this meeting recording as your contract expires. It will mysteriously disappear from YouTube. Mrs. Heller.
So, I have two motions before I get into my report. So, the first motion is to adopt the resolution approving the Delaware County 2023 Hazard Vulnerability Assessment and Mitigation Plan update.
Who wants the second?
Second.
All in favor? Any questions? Motion carries.
And the second motion is to adopt the resolution approving, adopting, and placing into immediate effect the Borough's Updated Emergency Operations Plan.
So moved. All in favor? Aye. Motion carries.
So, for my report, I do also want to echo with police accreditation, as Mr. Heller stated, that you did mention it in your interview, and it was quite funny because he said, even if I don't get the position, here's all the things that you need to do to get the accreditation because it is so important. And you were actually doing work before you were even hired, so it was quite an accomplishment. The department that I came from before actually had someone dedicated for that position, 24/7, that's all they did.
My brother, as it were.
Yes, and the chief did most of the part of it, all on his own, obviously with the help of his sergeants and the police officers, obviously, but a majority of it was done through you. You stayed on top of those policies and procedures. You were ahead of the game, so we have, you know, you to thank for that. It was easy for us to say yes, because again, your heart and soul was in it and is so important to our community, so thank you again. And it was quite an experience being there with you, actually receiving it, a little nerve-wracking, but it was a wonderful experience. I know I won't forget that, so, thank you.
That was a great tip.
Wow, great. So with that...
Oh, you're not done?
I'm not done. I gave my report at the workshop, but I do have a few more items to mention. So, we did have our first Family Day kickoff meeting, which occurred this past Wednesday on the 26th. Some of the stuff that was pretty much touched on was that we already gave some, you know, payments to Bettys for some of the equipment as well as the tents. Tom sent out all the sponsorship letters that were the 250 and above, so he's been busy at it. He had a binder about this big. It was almost as big as the mitigation plan, so it was like this big. So, Tom has been, I think, working...